We will call this meeting to order for the January 4th, 2023 Apple Valley Planning Commission meeting. The first item on the agenda is approval of the agenda. Is there any changes from staff?
There are no changes, Mr. Chair.
Okay, thank you. Commissioners, do you have any changes?
Move approval.
Second?
Commissioner Schindler and seconded by Commissioner Diekmann. All in favor? Indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. That passes. The next item is approval of the consent agenda. These items are considered routine and will be enacted with a single motion unless a commissioner requests an item to be pulled. Commissioners, are there any items you wish to pull this evening?
Move approval?
Approved by Commissioner Diekmann, seconded...
Second.
...by Commissioner Schindler. All in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay. This evening, we have one public hearing item. It's for Ex-Gulf On Sale Liquor Conditional Use Permit. I will open the public hearing. We will open the public hearing for Agenda Item Number 4A. The affidavit of publication for the notification of public hearing is available for inspection in the Planning Department. Anybody wishing to speak to this public hearing should be sure to fill out the attendance roster with their names and addresses so that the accurate records can be maintained. We will begin the procedure with a brief presentation by city staff, followed by a presentation by the petitioner of the hearing. Upon the conclusion of the presentation, the city staff will be asked to comment on proposals conformance with appropriate regulations and policies. After that, comments will be taken from the general public. Please come to the podium to speak and address all comments and questions to the chair. Welcome. This procedure will be being videotaped. It is important not to tap or rap on the podium while you speak. Alex?
Thank you, Chair. As noted, this is a public hearing, and this evening, we are seeking that you open the public hearing as you've just done, receive all public comments, and close the public hearing. If there are no items of concern, staff is seeking a recommendation from the Planning Commission this evening if you're able. The action is for a conditional use permit for on-sale liquor. The application is located at Times Square, which is the northwest corner of 150th or 42 and Cedar Avenue. Site is zoned retail business, which allows on-sale liquor sales conditionally. The Ex-Gulf location is located at... And I want to make sure I get this part right. Sorry. 7541 148th Street. This is the temporary location in Times Square where you've seen uses such as the Halloween Town. Wanted to show an overall context of the area as well. The reason being is just to show that it is in the heart of downtown and that there are not uses next to the site that may be incongruous to the type of use of on-sale liquor. Residential is quite a ways from the site. The interior site plan shows a 9,000 square foot, 9,800 square foot use with an outdoor patio that would be installed in the future. It is in the approximate location of the pergola that is there right now. There are significant improvements that are going to be occurring to Times Square. As I noted in the staff report, the center is recently sold and new ownership has taken possession and plans on facade improvements this spring, going into this summer. Ex-Gulf would like to open up prior to this, in the February to March timeframe, and as such, is seeking their liquor license. One of the other reasons why we are seeking Planning Commission's... Or the primary reason why we are seeking Planning Commission's action or recommendation this evening is that the liquor license is scheduled for the January 12 City Council meeting, and we want to act on the conditional use permit for the on-sale liquor prior to One of the items that code requires in order for a on-sale liquor is that it be in association with a restaurant, and so Ex-Gulf has provided a menu of their similar locations. As noted in the staff report, there are currently four other Minnesota locations with a fifth planned. This would be their flagship location. Then just a brief summary of what Ex-Gulf is, I chose to include as well, as it notes that it is a bar and restaurant and a golf simulator for interior use principally in the winter, but also available during summer months. The actions requested this evening are to take any public comments, close the public hearing, and if the Planning Commission concurs, to recommend to City Council approval of the conditional use permit. The applicant is available for any questions.
Any question by commissioners? Is the applicant here this evening? Do you have any comments that you'd like to make? If you come up to the podium, please.
Hello, Ben Ferret. Do you need my address?
Please.
408 North First Street, Minneapolis. One of the owners of the new Ex-Gulf Apple Valley location. Excited to be in Apple Valley. It's going to be about twice the size of our other locations. I'm really excited about the build-out, the finishes we're doing there. It's going to be an excellent place for the Times Square Center, and happy to answer any questions about the business or the business model that go beyond what was provided in the narrative.
Commissioners?
Looks like a nice facility and a nice amenity and a nice addition.
Thank you. Is there any comments from the public? There's no comments from the public or the commission. I will proceed with closing the public hearing. If there are no further comments, I will close the public hearing. It is the policy of the Planning Commission not to act on an item on the same night as a public hearing. The Planning Commission will lay all comments and information received tonight in its deliberation at further meetings. The item will continue to appear on further Planning Commission agendas until the recommendation on the petition can be forwarded to the City Council. With that said, what is the pleasure of the Planning Commission?
Mr. Chair, I move we recommend approval of on-sale liquor sales conditional use permit for Ex-Gulf Apple Valley.
Moved by Commissioner Diekmann and...
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Schindler. All in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. That's approved, and that'll move forward at the next City Council meeting that's coming up.
That is correct, Chair.
Thank you, Alex. Next item on the agenda this evening is the... We have two land-use items. The first is Item 5A, Lund's &amp; Barley's Sign Variance, and that's yours also, Alex.
Thank you, Chair. This item was previously reviewed by the Planning Commission on December 7, and due to a miscommunication, the applicant was unable to be present. This was noted in the staff report. The applicant is present this evening, would like to be able to present their application so that the Planning Commission can make a recommendation. The city attorney has advised that the Planning Commission can make a recommendation this evening. You can make a recommendation either to support the petition or to recommend denial to the City Council. As stated, all findings of the commission must be stated on the record. I'm going to go very briefly through this. Many of these slides are going to be in place in case the applicant would like to use them during their presentation. The location is the southwest corner of 155th and Pilot Knob. The sign ordinance intent, I'm not going to go through all of these pieces, but essentially, it is to protect and preserve the value of land buildings and preserve our local landscapes. If needed, the Planning Commission... Or I do have two slides for the Planning Commission to go through all the provisions of granting a variance. I can bring these up if requested. There were a number of site-specific items that the applicant's original narrative presented, primary being no primary access to the site off of Pilot Knob, the large gas pipeline easement to the north, and the lack of visibility due to the berm. They will be able to elaborate on these a little further as I went through them in the prior presentation. They were also... They also asked to provide a new graphic, which is here in front of you now. The text on it is a little small for the commission to be able to read. It is included in your packets at full size that you'd be able to bring up for members of the public, can also be seen online. The applicant will be able to come up and explain some of the points presented by this, and I've got a graphic that will help show it a little bit later as well. There are two signs. The variance request is for two freestanding signs. The first, this one is a permitted sign. All provisions are being met. This is the larger of the two. The variance sought is for the second sign west of the front entrance along English Avenue. The commissions saw this at their last meeting, but again, wanted to be able to show what the site looked like. This is the Lund's from northbound Pilot Knob, looking kind of southwest. And then this is a rendering of what the store would look like upon construction. Wanted to keep this slide in here because there was one minor change. Staff has reviewed with prior... Or has reviewed prior sign permits and prior staff. The... I noted at the last Planning Commission meeting that 500 square feet would be the total signage permitted per building. However, code does allow for the repetition of that 500 square feet, which would be allowed on the front wall to be on all faces. So Lund's &amp; Barley's would be permitted 500 square feet on the front and all sides. Sides can be considered along different planes. So if you have a plane where a portion of the building sticks out much further, that is considered a separate wall that's been consistently applied throughout the community. Lund's &amp; Barley's does have that towards the northbound side, as you saw on that previous slide. So where that wall undulates out from the principal plane, they would be allowed 500 square feet of signage on each of those walls. The overall area, and this is where I feel that graphic is well represented, if users are moving southbound on Pilot Knob and were to miss the turn at 155th to enter the site for Lund's &amp; Barley's, they would be able to make a turn at 157th and then come northbound onto English Avenue. This is the explanation that the applicant had in that additional graphic, and that that additional sign will allow users to know where to turn in. With that, the commission is asked to provide a recommendation if they're able to this evening. The applicant would like to say a few brief words and present their case. I'm going to leave this available for them to be able to go through the presentation.
Commissioner Diekmann?
Yeah, Mr. Chair. Alex, just a real quick question for you on that last graphic you had up. You said if somebody turns on 157th...
Sorry.
The sign is further up English Street. There's no sign on 157th, right?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Chair Scanlon, Commissioner Diekmann, that is correct. The sign location, those at home won't be able to see it. Matter of fact, you won't be able to see it. Will be slightly west of where the site is noted on that plan...
Right.
Or on this map.
Okay.
But it would be the entrance to this site where that sign is proposed.
But there's no way finding down on 157th?
There is not, no.
Okay.
The city code prohibits off-site signage.
Yep.
They would all need to be a single center in order for that type of provision to occur, and that was not the way that this was developed.
Yep, perfect. Agreed. Thank you.
Commissioner?
Forward, backward, any of the slides you'd like.
Okay, great, thank you. Look, Commissioners, my name is Brad List with Lund's &amp; Barley's, and appreciate you taking the time to come here on this snowy night.
Welcome.
And I'm just going to flip back to... If I can do this. To this one. I think that, you know, we're not... We don't believe that we're not getting enough signage for people to see us off Pilot Knob. I mean, I think that anybody on Pilot Knob is going to know that there's a Lund's &amp; Barley's there. The only issue that we're thinking about is we want to make things as convenient and safe as we can for our customers and for traffic. So for people who might miss the turn at 155th Street, and we think that, you know, it could happen more often because of the berm and it's pushed a little bit further south, somebody might not get into that right lane, and then the next thing you know, they've got to go down to 157th. So again, we don't believe somebody's not going to see our store coming down Pilot Knob, but you might miss that turn. And when you do, you go down to 157th, we just... Our main goal here is to make it so that people have a convenient and, you know, safe way to see signs so that they... We want to direct them to our main entrance. We'd rather have them go in there so that they're not going through the balance of the shopping center. So in this graphic, what we tried to show here is that between Mr. Carwash and the Schuler Shoes, we're going to have a relatively small opening there where they're going to see the Lund's &amp; Barley's sign on the building. You know, a shorter period of time to make the turn into the main entrance than they would have if we had a, you know, a larger sign at the main entrance. And, you know, that... There is the possibility to put a, you know, two-square-foot wayfinding sign, but that's pretty small and doesn't give you a whole lot of chance to see it before you write on it. So that's all we're attempting to do, is to make it easier to find the main entrance. We don't believe that that sign's going to change the business that we do here. I don't think it's big enough to... And it's not... That's not going to... What's going to draw people off of Pilot Knob. So again, it's just a... It's a... We think it keeps traffic flowing better, and it gets people to the main entrance and gets them in. That's our main goal.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Commissioners? Commissioner Diekmann?
Sir, based on what you just said, I'm finding it very hard to figure out how I would grant you a variance. It doesn't affect your business. Isn't that what you just told me?
I think that... I don't think that it's a... We don't count... We wouldn't count that as an advertising sign. I mean, I think people will find the Lund's &amp; Barley's if they're, you know, they're on Pilot Knob. I think what it does is it enhances the safety of people getting there, and it keeps the traffic flowing while on English Avenue. That's our goal. I mean, it's more of a safety enhancement than it is a business enhancement.
Yeah, and I'm just trying to figure out how we grant you a variance based on a hardship for an additional sign based on a need.
Well...
I guess I haven't heard one, is what I'm saying. If I'm trying to help you, I'm trying to find out what is the reason why we should grant you a variance? And what you're telling me is traffic flow and safety, but I think that would have been addressed by the city engineer.
I mean, that's our main thought, is that, you know, it enhances the safety of people getting to the store. I mean, you know, that helps your business in that people don't worry then about things. I guess what I meant when I said that we don't think we're going to get more business out of it is I don't think that it's not like the main pylon where it's an advertisement. This is... It's a sign that tells people how to get there, but it's... And I do think better safety and easier traffic flow does help you. I mean, people don't want congestion.
Agreed.
Thank you. Mr. McCombe?
Mr. Chair, with respect to... Are you planning any on-building signage on the west side of the building?
We are.
Okay, because there's... I just don't see a rendering of that here. Will it be similar to the signage? I guess that is off of 155th, or there's a rendering of what the building will look like. Is it going to be similar in size to the signage on the east and the north?
I think the one in the west might be slightly smaller. The main issue, again, we have with it is that you're past the Schuler Building before you'd see it. That's going to really help people that, you know, come from the north on English Ave. I think they'll see that right away, but people coming from the south won't see it.
Okay, and then... But then your view is that the two-foot sign is just not adequate for people coming...
It seems like you're right on top. I mean, you know, it's only two feet wide by foot tall, so...
Okay.
Pretty small.
Then the other thing, you know, in terms of whether it's, you know, unique to this particular site, I guess it's not in our packet, but one of the earlier slides, and it has an aerial view where you can see, I guess it's the Target off to the east, and, you know, they're similarly affected where there's not a... You know, they're... So they're off to the east, and I'm trying to remember exactly where the Target signage is. Mr. Sharp, do you happen to...
I can.
Okay.
Good step closer to the... Thank you, Brad. The signage, I believe users at home can see this. Signage for Target is right here.
Okay, that's what I... Okay.
Commissioner Scanlon or Chair Scanlon, Commissioner Mahowald.
Okay, because, I mean, Target's also doesn't have an entrance on Pilot Knob, so they're similarly situated in that respect. And then, as you go east on 157th into Cobblestone Lake, my understanding is, I don't recall there being any directional signs of any kind getting you back up to Target where there would be, you know, you look at the buildings that are along 157th and Cobblestone Lake as you're moving northeast, and you'd have similar sightline issues. So to me, it seems like it's very similar to the issues that Target faces. And I think my comment... My thought was, I just don't know if the, you know... It just... I mean, one, you're trying to do something that's completely, you know, setting the site up as unique. I do think other sites in the area are similarly affected, but I also... So I don't know. I'm having a hard time with that, I guess, is what I'm trying to say. And I don't know... My thought that I had expressed the last time was that maybe the request is premature. You can... It may not be an issue. I think Lund's &amp; Barley's is a destination store, and it... But so I'm just not quite sure the grounds are there for a variance, and then... But the issues that you've raised may become apparent. We're kind of speculating on those right now in terms of people's ability to find it as they're driving north on English. That's... Those are my thoughts, anyway.
Thank you.
Chair, if I may...
Please.
...would address the comment by Commissioner Mahowald, there is not directional signage for Target in this location. And then one other piece, because I do have the slides available. The... I believe that Mr. Brad List's comment on the advertisement portion of that is to address this provision within the zoning ordinance, that it does not convey advantage over neighboring sites. That was a item noted several times in their application materials, that the size of the sign was not intended to convey advantage over neighboring sites.
Yes, thank you. Chairman Scanlon, a quick question regarding the location of the secondary monument sign. For my benefit, that selection was located off English Avenue. Is there anything that prevents that from being out where the requested second sign is located? And then the smaller access signs would be at the entrance area. So this is the...
Are you referring to this?
Correct. So that sign is the one that's within all approval of the city, correct?
Chair Scanlon, Commissioner, correct.
Okay.
Location, as long as it is 13 feet back from a property line, not over the top of any easements or utilities, would be permitted...
Okay.
...anywhere on the site. We do not dictate location.
Okay, thank you.
So you're suggesting this sign will go there?
That was my question.
Oh. Now, that one we do want for advertising.
Okay. Okay.
I have... I was going to add some comments. I did miss the December 7 meeting. However, I did watch the video and listen to the comments of my fellow commissioners from that, so I have that background as I kind of go forward and look at this. I see one thing, you know, Lund's &amp; Barley's is a very established brand within the Twin Cities, and not just the signage that you're using, your logo and so forth, but the way you're designing your stores now are very brand-oriented, orientated in the fact that when you see that building, it... And the coloring and so forth, it talks about a Lund's &amp; Barley's location. So I'm also struggling with the justification in terms of how we're guided on being able to make these decisions on variances, and it's quite narrow on what we can and can't do. And I look at your... As Commissioner McCombe had mentioned, that across the street, Target, another local brand here in the Twin City, has kind of a very similar situation in what they've done in their signage and how they've done their signage on their building, and they have no direction... I mean, it's really just kind of a duplicate, I think, of what the situation that you have. And it seems, living in the area, that there's kind of a balance between traffic coming from both entrance points into that location and how the traffic flows in and out, and I would suspect that's going to happen here. So that's the observation that I have thus far, and I think it was also a good suggestion too, is if this doesn't move forward, is that, you know, you relook at it, that if you're finding that it does warrant, you know, your arguments that you're making, that you bring it back to us. So... But we'll see what happens here, so... Thank you very much. Alex, did you have anything additional?
Not at this time, Chair. Just seeking if the commission is seeking to make a recommendation this evening or not, and if so, what that would be.
All right. Commissioners, what is your pleasure?
Mr. Chair, I have first a question.
Okay.
Maybe this question is for legal, but does every action need to be made in the affirmative, and then we vote? Or do we... Can we make it in the negative?
Procedurally properly... Mr. Chair, procedurally properly, it would be... You should make it in the affirmative, but because it's a sign variance and depending on how you want to go. So if it's in the affirmative to recommend approval of the variance, then you will need to state your findings of the basis for the variance. If it's to deny... To recommend denial, you don't need findings. If it's to deny, to recommend denial, you don't need findings.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, if I may?
Please.
I move we recommend that no variance be granted for the condition, or for the additional sign.
Recommended by Commissioner Deekman and seconded by?
Second?
Commissioner Schindler. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. And all those not in favor indicate by saying aye. Thank you. So it did not unanimous vote there for not granting the variance.
That's correct, Chair. The recommendation will be forwarded to the city council. The applicant can present it at that meeting, or prior to that, it is their application. They would also have the option to withdraw.
Okay, thank you, and thank you for being here this evening. All right, the next item on the agenda is land use item, item 5B. And Stane Cobble Street Mall. Alex, that's yours also?
Correct. Obsidian Cobble Street Mall was also reviewed at the December 7th Planning Commission with minor corrections recommended by the commission and staff. This evening, we are recommending the following action, which would be a site plan building permit authorization for a 4,915 square foot retail building on Lot 2, Block 1, Cobblestone Lake, South Shore, 9th Edition. Didn't realize that was gonna be harder to say. The site is fully platted. That is one of the reasons why no further action required this evening, other than the site plan building permit authorization. For context, it is in the southeast corner of Pilot Knob and 157th, south of Caribou and Clover Life Spa, and the building to the north. Actually, I'm gonna go back one slide, one thing I want to take note of, and unfortunately, the yellow covered it up more here than what I saw on the computer. There is a pedestrian access right here that does have truncated domes for disabled individuals that was intended to link to the site. That will relate better to the site plan here. One of the pieces that was noted at the planning commission previously was some of the pedestrian connectivity. The site plan, while adjusted, did not address those pieces, so they are recommendations of approval. In the, a striping for pedestrian connectivity here, and then the extension of the sidewalk connect to the robust trail system in Cobblestone Lake. Those conditions will be added in the final resolution, but are the only two non-standard provisions that staff is recommending. Utility plan has adjusted slightly and has been met, reviewed by the city engineer and is compliant. The items were mainly related to stormwater. Everything else was already in compliance. One of the other primary items that the planning commission and staff had reviewed and why action was not taken at the prior meeting was that the landscape plan needed some adjustment or to make it a little more robust. The site landscape plan has been reviewed by Natural Resources and found to be compliant with all code provisions and recommendations. Planning has reviewed it, it may still be slightly light on the number of trees, however, it is a very small site. The applicant will be required to submit a certified landscape bid at the time of building permit, and that will be required to meet the 2.5% provisions required by code, standard conditions of approval for a site like this. The reason why I chose to keep this slide in here is because it goes through the plethora of species, which does meet Natural Resources' recommendations. These were not necessarily requirements for species diversity, but it is always something that we look for as it prevents our, or protects our natural landscape. Interior site plan did change slightly, you'll notice, or interior floor plan, the space, one of the spaces got a little bigger, one of the spaces got a little smaller based on tenant needs. That's where you'll see some of the square footage change, as well as the building was extended by about a foot on one side. Front and south building elevations were not amended, however, the final concern by the planning commission and staff were the elevations on the east and west sides, which had solid brick or stone facades, and now have additional material and glass added, so a significant improvement from prior review. The rendering for the site has not changed, but it will fit well within the cobblestone community. It meets all of the materials guidelines required within that special plan development zone. And with that, if there are any questions, I'm available. Otherwise, staff is recommending a site plan building permit authorization recommendation. Apologies, Chair. The applicant wanted to apologize they are unable to make it this evening due to the weather.
Okay, thank you. Any questions? Commissioner Schindler?
Can you bring up the elevations, please?
Sheriff Scanlon?
So, I apologize, I wasn't at the last meeting. In regards to that south face, is that, is that the final product?
Sheriff Scanlon, Commissioner Schindler, yes, that is proposed to be the final product. Staff suggested some minor alterations to that, although it does have five materials, six materials on the face, and it is a smaller building. When we see materials change like this on a industrial building, for instance, the Opus one that we recently saw, one of the panels is the entire length of this building. So it is a, by scope, a relatively small.
Okay, thank you.
As I was also not available at the December 7th meeting, I guess my only comment is, the, would be the south face of the building, which is kind of directly facing the senior facility, correct?
No.
Or do I have my?
Yes.
Or that's?
Yes, I was, I was thinking Presbyterian Homes, but yes.
Oh, okay. And is the utilities gonna, they don't show where the utilities are coming into the building, but I'm assuming majority of these commercial properties, they usually come where the two rear exit doors are, is kind of where the electrical and all that comes in and out of the building?
Sheriff Scanlon, yes, the, it's started to become a more standard procedure to screen those rear utility bays. In this case, they have the two utility rooms that you saw, but they will be very centralized. Staff continues to proceed with the provision of using a landscape budget if you need something other than vegetation around those. So we're using an incentive rather than regulation, as we don't have a provision directly within code.
Right.
For that. That is an option and a standard condition that has been added at this time.
Yeah, that's, when I was looking at it with the landscape plan, it looks like if they had some opportunity to bring some type of landscaping around that, that south, to kind of soften that with the fact that the senior center, center is right there, so.
Yes, and the, the commission can also recommend that that provision be in place similarly to if you were looking for additional materials on the south-facing wall.
Mm-hmm.
A condition could be added, that would be.
So do you have the proposed verbiage for the approval?
We've been moving back and forth on whether to fully include that, is it really lengthens your staff reports?
Mm-hmm.
In this case, your last ones had it where it took up about two and a half pages. In this case, due to the brevity of the items, chose not to include every provision, as most of these are standard. You can only note the three primary ones.
Okay, and how would you like that as far as in the proposal in terms of consideration? So those get taken into account over and above what you have here? Is that, there a need for that, or?
If you have a special provision that you would seek to add, note that in, as an amendment to the motion before you.
Mm-hmm, okay.
Otherwise, the ones that I've noted are already included, or would be to city council.
Okay, all right, all right. Commissioners, what is your pleasure?
Mr. Chair, I, I just want to confirm there, based on what Alex has in front of us here, is this what we would like to propose?
I'm.
Or do we have additional conditions?
I personally don't have any additional. I'm fine as far as Alex.
Okay.
Following through on the landscape part of it. I mean, that's something you, we've done before. I don't think that's necessary unless there's any other, Commissioners had any other comments on that? Okay.
Sounds good, Mr. Chair.
Go ahead.
I move we recommend a site plan building permit authorization for a 4,915 square foot building on Lot 2, Block 1, Cobblestone Lake, South Shore, 9th Edition.
Second?
Recommended by Commissioner Deekman, seconded by Commissioner Schindler. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
And those not in favor, same? That is approved, and that will go forward to upcoming city council meetings, that, or when is that gonna be?
Chair, this one would not be on the January 12th. We are past.
Because of what you're working through on the?
The ex-gulf was a special provision to move that forward on scheduling for liquor licensing. This would move forward likely for the second meeting in January.
Okay, thank you. That moves on to the next item, which is other business and the review of the upcoming schedule and any updates.
Mr. Chair, the next planning commission meeting will be on January 18th at 7:00 PM here at the municipal center, and then also, we will be, next city council meeting will be January 12th at the municipal center. So that's all I have for updates.
All right, well, thank you, Tom, appreciate that. And with that said?
Move we adjourn?
Second.
All right. Moved by Commissioner Schindler and seconded by Commissioner Deekman, all in favor? All people saying aye?
Aye.
Aye. So move? Meeting is closed. Thank you.